Second part of our program, please. We've heard from the Republican candidates for county commissioner, and now we'll hear from the Democratic candidates for county commissioner. And we will be taking questions from the audience on the 355 cards that you've received. We'll also be taking questions at the mic, and we'll be taking questions from our reporter, Melissa, from the Jackson Hole News &amp; Guide. But before that, the questions will come in between the opening statement and the ending statement, and we'll start with Natalia to give her opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Natalia Macor, and it is my privilege and honor and pleasure to serve as one of your county commissioners. And I have to say that I really do love my job working for you. I share your vision for a healthy, vibrant, and diverse Teton County, and I am working hard to make sure that we are building opportunity for everyone in our community. Opportunity means a lot of different things. I've been out talking to voters, and I've heard from all of you what it means to you. Opportunity means good schools. It means the ability to make a living and still have time at the end of the day to share a meal with your family. It means quality health care that doesn't break the bank. It's the security and stability of a roof over your head and a bed to sleep in, and it's the freedom to roam and play in our public lands. This year, you have the opportunity to elect action-oriented courageous leaders, and I ask for your vote so that I can keep working hard for everyone. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the organizers and sponsors of tonight's event who I know have been at it for approximately eight months. I'm running on a 45-year -- my name is Sandy Schuptrang. I'm running on a 45-year record of entrepreneurial and public service accomplishments and initiatives, beginning on an advisory committee to the County Planning Commission, all the way through actually passing a joint town and county comprehensive plan in 1994, on to establishing early learning programs for children and childbirth education programs. I've initiated recycling pathways programs and recently have been involved in energy conservation work. I hope this broad base will inform my work as a commissioner.
My name is Greg Epstein, and I want to thank everybody for showing up this evening and thank the Teton County Library and the League of Women's Voters for hosting this event. I was born in Jackson, Wyoming, and Teton County has been home for my family and myself for over the last 45 years. My mom was a teacher in the school district for 42 years, potentially maybe the longest tenure teacher in Teton County. My father owns a successful small business. I met my wife here, Mira, and over the years, I've established many, many meaningful friendships. This is truly home for me. Throughout my life, I've seen Jackson Hole and Teton County evolve and mature into what our community is today. For many people, Jackson Hole is a household brand, but those who reside here, it is a special place that deserves accountable stewards to help guide its future. Along with my history and through my job as head of production at Teton Gravity Research and as previous board president of Friends of Pathways, I engage with a wide swath of residents in various ages, socio-economic, ethnic, and ethnic backgrounds, so I have a voice for the community.
Thank you very much. We'll start with our first question from our reporter, Melissa, and we'll start with you, Sandy.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to be clear. I'm going to ask them the same questions I asked the Republican candidates, but the audience is welcome to ask whatever they want. So my first question, what do you believe is the most important issue in the county, and what specific ideas do you have that would lend to notable progress on this issue?
I believe the most important issue is completing the 2012 comprehensive plan, which includes supporting the vision of that plan, which is to preserve and protect the area's ecosystem to ensure a healthy community, environment, and economy for current and future generations. That does include housing. And there's a great deal of conversation going on about our housing situation. I have heard just in the last meetings such as this, a lot of ideas that I think if we work together, we can improve our housing condition, but we do need to take a look -- we need to go into our LDRs probably and take a look at doing some innovative revisions to the housing program as a community.
I believe that housing and transportation are completely connected, and so I think we need to look at those together as we start to move forward and think about what the future is going to look like here. I believe that transportation -- that there needs to be a transportation plan attached with any sort of housing plan, along with, I believe, that we need to include the public and private partnerships within housing. And I kind of lost my train of thought there. But in general, those are the two most important things at this point that I think we need to look at.
Thank you. I think we've had a lot of ideas about the issues that are facing our community, and I really think the best thing we have to do right now is buckle down and get busy working on them. We have ideas, we have plans in place. I think we need the capital and the funding to leverage those plans and to start making progress. There is no single right answer to any challenge that we're facing. We have to come at it from all angles. The other item, just to talk about something besides what we've all been talking about, is our state is in a really difficult spot, and we've been somewhat insulated from that. But I believe many of our social service organizations are going to start feeling the cuts from our state very deeply, and that we are going to have to take a close look at a community as what we really need to serve the people that live here, because I think we're going to have to start supporting some of those organizations more.
Thank you. Reed, if you could give a question from the audience?
Certainly. Why is it so hard to get a decision made by any of the two elected bodies, town and county?
Greg, we'll start with you.
That's a good question, and, you know, I do think that, you know, we can't completely bash on the current electeds. I think that they've done a good job in certain sectors and decisions that they've made, but I think that we're at kind of at a fever pitch within the community right now when you look at the amount of traffic on the roads and you look at people talking about spending the nights in their cars multiple days in a row and things like that. And so now there's questions being asked, and people want action, and it's time. And I think as the next round of people are elected, there's going to be a lot of pressure on us to make big decisions, and these decisions are long-term. We are at a point where the future of Teton County and Jackson Hole is -- it's 40 years down the road. We're going to -- they're big.
I think we have to give up trying to be perfect and finding the perfect, absolute, right, one-size-fits-all solution. As I said before, there are lots of ways for us to tackle the different challenges that we're facing, and I think we have some of the means, we have some of the will, but I do think who you elect this year can help turn some of that page. I also think we are -- we have recognized as a current elected official that we need better communication, and we are working on how to have better communication, how to be more effective with our staff so that they aren't buckling down and repeating themselves over and over again, but so the staff, our staff and the public knows that when we come together to make decisions, we'll make them. And if we need to adjust things later because we learned something new, we can do that. But I think some of our fear and anxiety over getting the absolute perfect solution is standing in our way.
I think Natalia has some good thoughts there. I would also say that for a period of time, there were quite a few commissioners that were relatively new. I feel like they're getting a lot more traction. I'd like to see them keep moving forward, and we have to remember that being a commissioner is group work. Commissioners don't get to make individual decisions. I do have a lot of experience with strategic planning and facilitation, and I would hope I might be able to put something positive in the mix there.
Thank you. Is there a question from the audience? Just raise your hand and come up. Okay? Please state your name.
My name is Andrea Reiniker, and I asked the Republican candidates a question that I'd like to pose to you as well, and that's about short-term rentals, not in the town, but in the county and particularly in rural areas. The small development that I live in, about 18 lots, six of them are short-term rentals now, and it certainly changes the character of the neighborhood. So my question is, what do you think the county should do, if anything, about short-term rentals? And if there's a homeowners association in an area, does that let the county off the hook? Thank you.
I'll start with you.
Well, I can speak from some personal experience. There's the short-term rental two doors down from me, and on the other side of me is the head of my HOA, and an HOA having it does not let the county off the hook. I hear about it all the time. So I hear you. I ask that question quite frequently of our code compliance officer, and I'm not thrilled with the answer, but the answer is, right now, we're waiting for the town to do what they're doing to see if we can get an enforcement procedure that works and that makes sense, recognizing that it is a larger problem in the town than the county, but it is very much felt in the county, and I feel it, and I do think we can do better, because I am concerned about our neighborhood communities. I live on a cul-de-sac. I have a two-year-old. He plays with our neighbors. I want it to be a family-oriented, single-family street, but I also want to be flexible to our families, and I think there's a balance that we have to find there. But right now, I want to enforce what we have on the books in the right way.
I too would like to see enforcement happen. That's one of those places that the earlier candidates were talking about government kind of being irresponsible in spending. Those are the kinds of things. If we want to have a functioning community, we need to spend a little money at doing it, and if we don't have staff to do it, it's not going to happen. So I do believe that we want to be a community first, not a resort first, and I think we need to -- short-term rentals are not allowed, and we need to take care of that. I don't think that it should entirely fall to homeowners associations. They actually don't always have the capacity to act.
This is a tricky question, because you're dealing with land rights, and that's what makes America so -- but I also understand that we are a community and that short-term rentals can reflect on people's neighborhoods and things like that. Is it within the governance of Teton County right now? There's no laws or statutes right now that say that the county can really do much. We can send the sheriff probably to a property or something like that. And I think what Natalia said about, let's see what the town does with their short-term rentals and how that program works and how that oversight works, that's a good test model for us, and then we can move forward. HOAs, they can be effective if they're written correctly, so I think if you're going to move into a neighborhood, you also need to check what the HOAs say.
Thank you. Melissa?
When it comes to affordable housing, public-private partnerships have been hailed as a good solution moving forward. How would you ensure transparency and accountability when partnering with a private entity?
When partnering with public money and resources with a private entity, the public aspect of it is still subject to the Freedom of Information Act. So if people are really not trusting their officials to do the right thing, that's one avenue that they have. Beyond that, I think we need to work on building trust a little bit, and also, when you're talking about partnerships, especially as it relates to housing, that -- let's see, I'm going to lose my train of thought here. When you're talking about partnerships related to housing, now, I think I'm going to give up on that one. I'm not sure where I was going with it.
I think the first bit of oversight is that you people elect us in, and you can elect us out. So if the oversight with what is happening with a public-private partnership, and if the government side isn't doing the right thing, then, you know, we'll be out the next term. Secondly, I feel like with the new joint housing authority, we have this new level of people that are doing this bit of oversight. They're looking at the potential proposals. They're vetting them out. They're looking at budgets. They're looking at cost per square foot. They're looking at site location, and then they're sending it over to the planning department and eventually the electeds. So I think there's a lot of oversight, and I also think through the town and county budgets, there's a lot of oversight as well. So again, you guys can elect us out if we don't do the right job.
My hope is we look to have public-private partnerships as one of the solutions to our housing challenges, is that we, as a housing entity, can create a process. I don't know if that looks like a grant application, but some kind of clear process that lays out what's required if you're going to partner with the government and utilize public money, and that if we have a process like that, we can set the parameters, and then hopefully we can set it loose to our really creative community to come up with ideas and solutions and offer things within our parameters that we might not have thought of, and then allow us to go forward and explore that. And I think it is incumbent upon all of us to hold those partners accountable to what they say, to build into our partnership agreements what we need to do to make sure that we can be responsible stewards of your money.
Thank you. Next question will come from Reed from the audience, and it will go to you, Greg.
Okay. With state budget cuts, health and human services are seeing cuts of 8% to 35%. What role do you see the county having in assuring access to these important services for these in our county?
I think we're going to have to step up to the plate. I think that the social side of our community is very, very important, and we're going to have to figure out how that's done. Now, when you look at the entire general fund, we can allocate certain monies for certain things. I'm a believer in the 1% community priority fund, and I think that if we can allocate those dollars to housing and transportation, that could free up money for the social aspects of our community, and I look at that as being part of the solution.
It's going to be hard. I wish that I could paint a really great picture of it, but I think we're going to have to tighten our belts, and we're going to have some really difficult community decisions to make, and we've been really blessed to get to realize and have so many things that we want here and get to enjoy them, but some of those wants might be put on hold because there are people that we have to take care of. And frankly, if we don't take care of what we need to take care of on the preventative side, we pay for it double, triple, quadruple, 10 times more later. So I am -- we started to see it a little bit this year, and I think we have to keep talking about it as proactively as possible before we get to organizations that have been staples in our community closing their doors.
I agree with Natalia, and you can help. The 1% general penny that is going to be on the November ballot will do just what Greg said. It will allow a little bit more flexibility. The housing and transportation will be earmarked, but that is released from the rest of the county budget, so to speak, and that'll help to try to meet the needs. Old bills is coming up. We all need to participate in old bills, and there's some, as we know, many, many, many wonderful human service organizations here. It will fall to the county if we don't take -- if we don't do good budget planning and try to take care of it on the front end. There'll be more to pay later.
Thank you. Do we have another question from the audience? Oh, sorry. Glad you spoke up since you were behind me.
Jan Friedland. Is there any reason why, since we have room to add a mill or half a mill, that we couldn't use property tax to help offset this? We are a very low-taxed county, as you know. So what do you think about raising the property tax?
I would just love it if the town wanted to raise the property tax. You know, I had, as an appointed commissioner, I had a really serious conversation with our county clerk and our county treasurer, and they sat me down and they said, here's the deal with the mill levy. We don't lower the mill levy, and we don't raise the mill levy. The mill levy stays where it is. So I've taken that to heart a little bit, and I say that a little bit in fun and jest. But, you know, I think it's something that could be on the table. I wouldn't take it off the table. Our market value of property that's taxable in Teton County is worth $14.1 billion. So it is assessed, I think, at 1.9. There is money there. I think there are other solutions that we can try first, and I would -- I'm open to all solutions, but that's probably not the first one I would walk in the door advocating for.
Again, I agree. The mill levy is -- it can be touched, but I think we should start with the November general purpose cent, that two-thirds of which is paid for by our visitors. That's a pretty easy, painless one. And if that doesn't help relieve the pressure, then that's what we have to do. You have to look at the property tax. We don't have, as you know, any income tax in Wyoming, which helps to create some of the dichotomy that we already have in our community, but that's the way it is, so we have to learn to live within the boundaries that we have.
I agree with the two ladies next to me. I think that there's a bit of a progression we need to work through with taxes. We have SPECT. We have the Community Priority Fund that are both on ballots this year. I think we need to leverage the 4 million people that travel through Jackson Hole yearly. As Sandy said, they cover about 60% to 70% of the revenue that comes into our county. If we needed to raise more money, then yes, as a last resort, we could look at raising property taxes. My biggest question about raising property taxes would be, how would you assess it? Would you assess it on the day that the person bought the property, or would you assess it on current value? Because I think for a lot of people sitting in this room, they've seen their property prices skyrocket just by living here, and to no fault of their own. They just live here. So I'd have to -- we'd have to assess that.
Thank you. Melissa, could we have another question from you, please?
We've discussed alternate forms of transportation, such as riding the Start Bus or riding a bike, to curb traffic. How often do you tap into these sources yourself?
Well, I live in up Game Creek Plateau, and there's no bus service up there, and it's a pretty steep hill. But I spend a good portion of every single day talking with my husband about carpooling, and sometimes it's just talk. Tonight, we've carpooled. I don't know where he is. I haven't seen him yet in here. My family uses the pathways all the time. They do use them to commute to work and for exercise and recreation. And when I'm in town, I walk a lot, and sometimes I do take the Start Bus, but if I have a choice, I walk.
I'm your typical Jackson male local, so any opportunity I can get on my bike, I do. So I live in Malady. I work in Wilson. There's no bus. I try to ride my bike as much as I can. I plan my weeks around the days I can ride my bike and the days I have to drive my car. I can't wait for the day that I could actually have that option of jumping on a bus from Melody Ranch and zipping into town, or going out to the village, or going to work, going to Wilson, and being able to do that. Now, in the wintertime, my wife and I will either drive our car to Albertson's or to Stilson, and we'll jump on the bus and go skiing, but it's just -- it's not the most convenient option.
I live at the Hoback Junction, and I would love to ride the bus, because my son loves to ride the bus, and we ride it around town, but I have the challenge that I think a lot of our families have. The bus doesn't stop where my son goes to daycare, and so I would have to extend my commute by probably 45 minutes if I rode the bus. And so that is -- there's not an easy answer to how we can solve that, but I think that looking at those kind of pieces and how that is affecting our families that would like to utilize our transit network is important. I carpool and have a bike in town that I like to bike around and also walk around as well.
Thank you. Reed, a question from our audience. This will go to you first, Greg.
This question asks about the 2012 comprehensive plan that was unanimously adopted by both the county and the town. It states that the existing resorts cannot expand their footprint. Will you support the comprehensive plan's prohibition of expanding the footprint or not?
I think that's a slippery slope. I think we need to use the comp plan as our guide, but I really think we need to look at development on a case-by-case basis, and we can't say absolute no to everything that's going on. We have to take advantage of private dollars to make this community continue to run. We can ask the voters to vote in different taxes, but that's not guaranteed. And so we have to look at specific plans and proposals from different developing groups and look at them and see if they fit the vision of Jackson Hole.
I -- it is tricky. I think it's hard to be an absolutist. Do I think our resorts should expand in theory? No. Do I think that the comprehensive plan went through a really intensive community process, and that was decided upon in some kind of consensus? I do. And should that be honored? I agree. At the same time, I think any property owner, anyone deserves the right to go through our process. Doesn't mean that we would vote for it. So without a specific application in front of me, I know there is things in the air about snowking, but without one, I wouldn't prejudge an application before we saw it. There's different types of expansion. I don't know what it could be, but I could imagine there could be some expansion that actually many of us like and could be good for open space. I don't know. So I don't want to give a black and white answer to an issue that's not black and white, but I think that decision was put into the comp plan for a reason, and that it needs to be honored and considered.
I agree. I would be inclined to use the comp plan results. I think -- I do think there may be some, especially at Teton Village perhaps, some changes within the footprint that are reasonable to look at, but I would really like to stick with the footprint. And again, I think until you have a specific proposal in front of you, it's hard just to say no. But one of the things we keep doing is pushing the envelope into areas where the wildlife are, and we say that wildlife are one of the key values that we have in the community, the habitat, and the wildlife themselves, and every incremental step we take diminishes their chances.
Thank you. Is there another question from the audience? I'll turn all the way this time so I can see Liz. Sorry, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Kingwell. Republican candidates were against the November 1 penny tax, at least that's what I heard, for transportation and housing, because it would be open to being spent without the restrictions of a SPECT. How do you feel, it sounds like you're positive about it, if that's what I understood, about the tax, and how would you ensure it was spent for housing and transportation? And why is it a general purpose tax instead of a SPECT?
Am I up?
Natalia?
Yes, I'm going to start. I just want to answer all the parts. I'll tell you why I supported it as a general purpose tax over SPECT. I think SPECT is a great tool, and could we fund elements of housing and transportation with SPECT? Absolutely. Do I think it's the best tool to accomplish the long-term goals we've said? I don't. I think the general penny gets us where we want to go in the long term, and that it's a tool we haven't yet used. In terms of ensuring that it gets used that way, as long as I am in office, that's how that's getting used. I also know that we've talked with other county elected officials, and it will have its own line item and go into its own line item, so we can be really transparent about accounting for that. And it's one of the things that I kind of want to ask for an annual audit, maybe even more than annual, of just where that's going, how are we making progress, seeing where that specific item is charting down. And I'll stop there.
I would like to, I do support, as I've said over and over again, I support the November general purpose one penny. But the reason why I don't think SPECT is, I actually am going to make a fairly strong statement. I think it's a horrible way to run government. Because you can only do capital projects. You can only do exactly what's on the ballot. We've been doing it for 30 years. We have some wonderful facilities, including this building and many, many others. But we do not have the way or the resources to maintain and operate them over the long run. We need to have some flexibility in government as your representatives to be able to do that.
Again, I agree with the two ladies. I look at transparency as basically accounting 101. I mean, you have line items, and with government, there's complete transparency. Anybody in this room right now can go, I think, onto the town or county website and look at their budgets and see where the money is being spent. As far as SPECT versus the 1%, again, I concur. I think SPECT has brought us a lot of really great things in this community. This library, a lot of the pathways. The town dump has been fixed. But it doesn't cover operating costs. And so that just still leaves us handcuffed at the end of the day. We need to have some sort of constant revenue stream. And that 1% Community Priorities Fund will, again, that being allocated towards housing and transportation could potentially free up other monies in the general fund for other things in the community.
Thank you. Melissa, a question from you, please.
Some have said construction of the Munger Mountain Elementary School will lead to housing in District 7. Would you be supportive of placing housing in this area?
The first thing I would want to do is to participate with my colleagues, the public, and staff about their analysis of that. But having said that, I think it's a possibility that some housing around that school property, if the school's willing to share it, and we haven't had that discussion yet either, may be appropriate. Because it is true that Hog Island is a mixed-use area right now. And it's about the same distance from town as Wilson is from town. So it's worth a look. But I alone am not in a position to say it's a good idea.
I publicly was opposed to the Hog Island School for the size of the school, for the particular site location. I think that if it had been a school of 120 children instead of 400 to 500 children, it would have made a lot more sense. But in saying that, with the town's decision to put the sewer line down to the school site, it's opening up the ability to upzone. Like Sandy said, it's mixed-use down there. If there is going to be a school of that size and it does go through, then if our goal is to pull more traffic off the roads, if our goal is to reduce impact on wildlife and just generally taking care of our planet, then I would say that we would have to look at starting to develop down there and put some, at least some affordable housing in there to start.
I am open to considering it for many of the same reasons. And I think for better or worse, our highway is getting wider down south. And so in terms of where we're going to ask traffic to go, I would rather see it going there than onto our already congested roads in other places. But I think it does have to be carefully analyzed and go through the process that anyone else would have to go through. And so if the school gets built there and as it moves forward, I think we can assess that and what those needs are.
Thank you. And Reed, we'll ask for an audience question that Greg has asked.
Yeah, this person is concerned about already profitable landlords who've announced egregiously steep rental increases. And the question is, is it possible to legislate against greed?
So I think we just have to work with market forces. So let's look at a scenario. Again, if we create some public-private partnerships where we allow for some deed-restricted rentals to be created, and we up our stock in those deed-restricted rentals, and/or we create cheaper, market-based rentals, then the free market will take care of really high rent. I mean, if there's an over-demand, your rent's going down.
There's a legislative candidate in the room.
I mean, oversupply is easy. Oversupply.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I'm sorry, were you done?
I was just saying, I meant an oversupply then.
I would be open to talking to legislators about things like that. I think there are options. You know, can we legislate against greed? God, if we could, we'd all be millionaires. But I, you know, there are reasonable protections that could be put in place for tenants. I would love for us not to have emergency situations where people are ending up homeless and on the street. I think that puts our community in a really difficult place and that some of that could be avoided. It's not, we don't have an easy state to do things like that in, but it doesn't mean it's not worth trying. And it's something that I've talked to elected officials in other states about how they've started to introduce things like that slowly over time to see if there isn't something we can do to make it easier and more stable and better for everyone.
As has been alluded to, the question of landlord-tenant relationships is actually a state-level question. And the state rules do favor landlords. I too would be very willing to work with our legislators and the community, again, to see what kinds of requests we might have at the state level and to lobby for them at the state level. I like to appeal to people's better natures, and I think we can do that to some degree. A lot of these are conversations that need to be had and haven't been had between renters, landlords, employers, residents, and other stakeholders.
Thank you. Is there another question from the audience? Please. Give us your name first.
How do you feel about?
Give us your name first, please. Your name?
Bob Langfeller. How do you feel about all these, I know all of us have thought about it, these unoccupied second homes throughout Teton County? I have a friend in Alpine who, the people show up three weeks a year. She's a caretaker. She lives off-site. Would we ever reach a point we could ban second homes? Either live here full-time or leave.
This question starts with you, Natalie.
It's a good question. My in-laws have a second home here, so I don't know how I feel about that. There's some interesting ideas there. I think that we really have to work hard right now not to demonize people in our community. We cannot demonize anyone who cares about this place because I know we all care about it. It's tricky. I've asked the question before. When we talk about our 65% of our workforce housing, of our workforce living here, is there some other number that we want, some percentage of homes that we have to be occupied? Like, what are the other metrics that we could use in that? Could we measure it? I don't know. But the answer must be in inviting people who are second homeowners into the challenges that we're facing and asking them to help be part of that solution and not just blaming them for everything, even though it's fun and easy.
The short answer is no. But the longer answer is that there, gosh, I think it's more than 50%. It's more like 60, 65 to 70% of the homes that have been built in the last several decades are second homes. And they are indeed not occupied full-time. So we can't, I think, legislate anything, but we can use our leadership position, perhaps, to encourage new thinking, you know, in terms of perhaps housing caretakers, things like that. People that are willing to serve as caretakers while they're also working elsewhere in the community. But then we have to find a place for them in the summertime when they do come and they get moved out.
It's a good question. I think to deal with it, obviously, we can't demonize anybody. A lot of these people actually bring a lot of benefits to our community. But I think we can do something about it with zoning. I think we could require a caretaker's apartment or a caretaker's home. So at least you're giving a person a place to live and you're not taking away from a place in town where a caretaker or a caretaker's family could live. So, you know, what that takes within the governmental process, we'd have to explore. But I think definitely that could be an opportunity.
Thank you. Melissa will have the next question, and I've lost track. Sandy, please.
I actually have a follow-up. Would you support a higher tax for second homeowners?
Those, well, first of all, that isn't a decision I think that we can make in terms of state and county parameters for process. And Natalie, maybe you have a different take on that. But they already do pay a higher property tax based on the value of their home. So to that degree, yes, the assessment protocols call for them paying more. But Melissa, you might have to elaborate a little bit on what kind of higher tax you're talking about.
I have a question that came from you.
Okay.
Again, the state of Wyoming, outside of the sales tax, our lodging tax, and SPECT, it's pretty tricky to levy taxes. But in saying that, you know, I think, again, there might be an opportunity to explore taxes based on square footage. Maybe something over 5,000 or 6,000 square foot. I don't know. Even 4,000. But other than that, they pay more in sales tax for all the materials that go into their house. They pay more in property tax. And typically, a lot of these people that come here, even though they're here for three weeks, they do spend a lot of money here. And they do put money back into the community in a lot of the nonprofit organizations.
As we know, our state is hurting. I know that there has been some talk at the legislative level of trying to put together a bill that has a variety of tax options that local communities could vote to include or not include depending on the needs of their community and if they wanted them. I don't know much more than that. But I do know that they are starting to have to look at other places to find revenue. And all of a sudden, maybe Teton County is the darling of the state of Wyoming in Cheyenne. I don't know. But I would not be opposed to considering something like that. But I don't think we, I think the legislature would have to make their determination of what to include and that it would be great to allow voters to vote on that tax.
Reed, a question to Greg.
Yeah. Where would you suggest building affordable housing? And as a subset of that, would you support allowing trailers or RVs on county land like Stilson with permits of law enforcement for safety?
Yes, there's, that's a lot of questions. But to start out, I'm a true believer of town is heart and complete neighborhoods. So I don't want to put all the pressure on town. I think that there's other places in the county that we could establish as viable places for affordable housing. I think we need to look at our large landowners in Teton County, especially the ones that are contiguous with the town at this point, and chat with them and figure out. And again, it's going to come down to zoning on what's actually, what we can actually do. And then as far as RVs and things like that, I mean, this summer was an emergency. If we are in an emergency situation where people are actually homeless, then yes, I think that we could create some sort of permitting process for people to live in their RVs or cars in public parking lots.
I am open to talking about it. I don't know if Stilson is the right spot only because we don't, we're not the only users of that property. I think especially in the short term, that might be a way to help. But I don't want to see it started as a short term and it end up as a long-term solution and that it derail us from looking at more permanent, stable options for affordable housing. I think affordable housing and density in the county might look a little bit different than density in the town, but it doesn't mean that it can't and shouldn't be considered, as we were discussing before with the new school. And so I think, again, lots of options are there. I just want to make sure that we are not, I don't want to invite families to live in a place that I wouldn't want to live and that isn't safe for their family.
I think that one of local governments' main ways to assist with the affordable housing dilemma is to secure land for the housing. And I am hearing a lot from nonprofits and private developers about getting the ability to kind of move forward themselves without mixing the government into the actual development and construction. And I think I would agree with that. So affordable housing, we have a lot of empty lots, actually. Just drive around and look. And a lot of opportunity for redevelopment. So I think there are many opportunities for affordable housing. In terms of RVs, it has been decades since we've allowed any kind of RVs or mobile homes here. I think we don't want it to be permanent housing, but I do believe we might take a look at seasonal, i.e. summer, temporary housing.
Thank you. We have time for one more question from the audience, if there is one. If not, we'll go to the closing statements of our candidates. Anyone? Okay. We started with Natalia, so we'll start with you, Sandy.
Well, once again, I appreciate you all being here tonight and hearing about our community, which I think everybody in this room does. I feel honored to be up here with these two younger people. I am grateful to have been able to live, raise a family, and work in Jackson Hole for a long period of time. If you agree with some of my views and values, I hope you'll consider casting a ballot for me between now and August 16.
As the future stewards of this community, we're really going to have to work through a handful of workable decisions on how Teton County is going to function in the future. I think with the comprehensive plan as our guide for conservation and responsible growth, we're going to need to use some innovative ideas in the decision-making process. We're going to need to have collaboration between the public and private sectors regarding affordable housing. We're going to definitely need to leverage the 4 million visitors who come to Jackson Hole on a yearly basis. I believe we need to make a cultural shift in our over-reliance of single occupancy vehicles. And we need to just move forward and we need to strive for a sustainable year-round working population where the environment, people, and businesses can thrive side by side. And I look forward, if you agree with my vision, I would ask for you to make a vote for Greg Epstein on August 16.
Thank you to our hosts. And I want to thank my fellow candidates for your willingness to serve. It's not easy to sit up here. I really do believe that we can accomplish what we want to accomplish. Teton County is really a place where neighbors help each other out. It's a place where I think the middle class can flourish. And it's a place that we embrace and thrive when we delight in all of our differences. I'm raising my family here because this is a community that really cares, and I find that inspiring. I'm running to keep working hard for you as your commissioner because as we have discussed tonight, there is a lot of work to do and we need to get busy. I look forward to continuing to visit with you in the coming weeks and months. And I know you have ideas about how we can make progress. And I know you have ideas about how we can make progress on our challenges, and I want to help put those ideas into action. I pledge to you that I will work hard. I need your vote. I need your support, and I need you to keep showing up like you are. Thank you.
Before we thank our guests, and the candidates have been wonderful all evening, appreciate their being here, but the library is now closed. So you must exit either through these doors or the door in the back. And there is one more candidate forum. It's next Wednesday, same time, same place, 6:00 to 8:30, right here. And this will be the SPECT Proposals in House District 22, divided up over the evening. And one last thing, if you would, put your chairs on whatever side of the room when you depart. That helps everybody very much. Let's say thank you.